Ken Suri, thank you for making this happen.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Well, let's start there. Let's start with where you've been, what you've been doing in your career and like what you're doing now. And then also then we'll get into why you're running.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so I've lived in Woodway 25 years, moved here from Orange, Texas, where I had been working for nine years at the daily paper over there. I'd started as an assistant sports editor. Then I was sports editor, then I was editor of that paper. And then the opportunity presented itself to to come to Waco. My wife was thrilled. She went to Baylor. So in 98, we moved, I moved first. We were trying to get the house sold. So I moved here and started in March of 98.
That's when I came to Baylor, is 98?
Okay, yeah. So yeah, March of 98, moved moved here to Waco. It was summertime when we finally found a house. I was just staying at at a couple of different places. Temporary basis and then about my wife and young daughter, she was a, she was born in 96. So she was, you know, a little over, not not two yet at that point. But yeah, so we looked and and found a place on the East Fairway. In fact, our realtor lives like the next street over. So still see her when she's out on walks. But anyhow, yeah, so that that got us here. A big part was trying to find Midway School District. Because my wife still had friends here that kind of said, well, you know, that's, you know, we think that's a great school district. Of course, it's interesting now that my wife works for me by SD. She's a sixth grade teacher over at River Valley.
Is that right?
Middle school.
Okay, what does she teach?
Science.
Okay.
She taught math for a while, but she's done science the last three years now. Yeah, I think this is her third year to do that. But yeah, so that that brought us here. And so my daughter was born in Orange before he left, but my son was born here in 99. And yeah, we've utilized all this, you know, we've walked here at the Arboretum, you know, we've been at White Hall was a was a regular place to to play on the swings. Or my wife and I actually played pickleball out there sometime last year.
Is that right?
It was a windy day. It was not the best time to play pickleball out there because it was kind of blowing the blowing the ball around a little bit.
I've never played. I've heard it's like all the rage though. Everybody's playing it.
It's, it is a lot of fun. You know, we probably don't get to do it as often as as we'd like. And I know, you know, the city's trying to address that, making that option certainly for for our seniors these days. But yeah, so I was working at at the Trib, came over as an assistant city editor, which also handled the neighbor sections, which was a weekly section for like, there was like the northern part of the county and the southern part of the county. So we covered Woodway through through that. That went away in 2006. So I adjusted to a few different things. We had a, we had a, an a blog at one point that I was in charge of. And then for the last 12 years, or the last 12 years of my employment there, was in charge of the Waco Today Magazine. Which is a fabulous way for getting to meet a lot of people, sharing those stories with with our readers. So really enjoyed that, but almost a year of the day now was when corporate decided that my position was no longer needed. And when I got the call, I said, well, what about the magazine? I said, well, well, that's going away too. Well, I hate to see that, especially since, you know, I don't know, it was not, so I want to always stress that. This was not a local decision by the Trib to get rid of Waco Today Magazine and my position. This came at the corporate level. They were making cost cutting moves and that was, that was one of them. So I.
Where's corporate for?
Davenport, Iowa, Lee Enterprises. And they've got a number, the only two they have in Texas are the Waco Trib and the Bryan Eagle, which is where the Waco Trib does get printed on the three.
Is that right?
Yeah, on the three days that they do have the print edition.
There it is, A and M and Baylor.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, that connection's still there. Yeah, I was actually just at A and M this past weekend, past Friday. Cause I'm in the Former Journalism Students Association group. I'm a board member there. And we had a recognition ceremony for actually someone that I worked with back in 86 on the battalion, the school paper. Back then I was sports editor, she was the editor and she's done great things since. Now is at the Sacramento Bee. But yeah, so I got to be on campus right before muster happened, which is always celebrated April 21st. That's an ongoing thing to recognize Aggies who have passed in the previous year.
Oh, is that right?
So yeah, and there was a muster ceremony here at Central Presbyterian Church that they've hosted several years. So I got to go.
Is that an Aggie specific thing, muster?
Yes, yes. It's a really great, it's it's a terrific way to remember those who pass. And and one of the things that they do is they they announce kind of the roll call. And someone, usually someone who knows that individual will say here, you know, will answer for them. It's a real, and there's a candle lit. So it's a real touching ceremony.
Cool. Okay, so that brought you up till last year.
So last year, let go was was looking for work, thought I had a few things that might work and those didn't materialize. But then I went in for an interview with Farmer Veteran Coalition. It is a national nonprofit that moved from California in 2022 to Waco for a few reasons. They wanted to get, because it is national and has has members, have near, have over 48,000 members across the entire, you know, United States, even territories, the US territories. They wanted to get to the central time zone so they could better serve, you know, everyone. Because I mean, if you're on the West Coast, the East Coast has half the day gone by by noon time almost. So it was a chance to to better serve there. Having the Texas Farm Bureau here in Waco was a big draw. Having an airport, because we do, we do some traveling with that job as well. Mostly our executive director, she does a lot of traveling on behalf of the organization. So yeah, so Farmer Veteran Coalition, it gives me a chance. So I'm communication specialist for them. Gives me a chance to still do all those journalism skills. And now I'm learning kind of the marketing end, a little different for me, but trying. But yeah, so I still get to do the stories and such good stories. I mean, it's a chance to share what these veterans are doing after they get out of service and they want to do something new. And we specifically help them with agriculture, if they want to get into agriculture, whether it's getting the, taking over the family farm, or they want to get into maybe beekeeping. Surprisingly, beekeeping, a number of veterans who have PTSD have found beekeeping to be a therapeutic thing for them. There's something about the vibration of the bees.
That's fascinating.
Yeah, I would not have thought that. I mean, so I'm learning all the time.
I'm not surprised by it. I feel like there's hidden things all over when you're, get your hands dirty like that that are beneficial to you.
And I think that's true for a lot of veterans too. It's, you know, they did so much stuff with their hands. This is kind of a chance to do that and and kind of, sometimes I say, this is like my new mission, you know?
Yeah.
And we've got aging farming populations. So it's, you know, so trying to make sure that you've still got that food supply, you know, stuff being grown. And there's a number of things that we do. We've got this homegrown for hero, I'm sorry, homegrown by heroes. Label that they can use on products that they make. So if they go to a farmer's market and maybe they've got honey, they've got the label they can put on. And so, you know, some people love to support veterans, you know, finding, so. Yeah, so it's, it's really been a fulfilling job for me. I've really liked coming on board. And so I started that in August of last year, so not even a year into that yet. And even at that, it's it's growing staff wise. She's been adding folks and we're trying to really do what we can to support part of our veterans in that way.
How big is that operation?
Well, we have, let's see, we have eight.
Okay.
Here in Waco, we actually have three folks. Is that right? One, two, three folks, four remotes, excuse me, four folks remote right now. One's in Montana. There's another one in Louisiana who actually coordinates our very first, he's our first regional coordinator. He's in charge of what we call the Delta Region. So among the way it works, there's actually 10 regions that are kind of broken up the way the USDA looks at the growing areas across across the nation. So we're in the process of trying to be helpful in that regard, really have someone more direct helping those members.
Okay.
So yeah.
Neat. I like that.
It's, it's been great.
We've, our family's just gotten into the past couple of years of farming or trying to farm. We have some buddies in Robinson that we did a big old plot with. And now I got at my house and my folks' house for planting stuff. So we're just learning, but very interested. And we tried beekeeping.
Okay.
And they all flew away, so we gotta get another one.
Yeah, you know, and I, another reason for coming to Texas is Texas has about, for us, about 5,000 members. So it's one of our larger states as far as, yeah.
Good. Cool.
Yeah, so that's been, that's been good. And I guess the other thing that maybe leads me to this point with with running for for Waco City Council is while I worked for the paper, that was off the table. There was no way I could serve because that would be a conflict of interest. You know, good ethical guy, you know, guardrails is what I like to call them, making sure that there wouldn't be any conflict of interest on that. Now that I'm out of that, it gives me a chance to to serve.
The conflict of interest being you're reporting from a perspective.
Yeah, you can't be reporting on something that you're, you're a member of in that regard. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so tell me more about that.
Especially with government, because a lot of times the coverage for for government stuff can be a little, you know, it can be controversial sometimes because of what's happening.
Well, tell me more about that, about running, what you saw, what you wanting to run, you said.
Well, honestly, it was kind of my, my wife hearing a few things that had her concerned. And so she went to a few of the of the meetings and encouraged me to come to some of them too. So I was, I was there as well for a few, you know, the bike lane was one, there was an issue. I guess one of the ones that really made me think about, maybe, maybe I should get involved, was there was a situation with with the development and a couple of members wanting to, a couple of council members wanting to require an HOA to be in charge of that development. Well, state law says you can't require an HOA. That can't be part of the stipulation when you, when you start that out. The city attorney told him, no, and it still got on the agenda and it still went to vote. And it just bothered me that it's like, you're opening up the city to litigation. If you pass this, why would you go against the advice of the city attorney? You know, there's been a number of other things that have been a concern. Now, I had already decided before this whole sidewalk grant issue came up. But honestly, that just kind of solidified in my head why I should, why I should run. I mean, this was a, a grant that was worked on for, for a while. It went through the whole process through, through Texadot. And the Texas Transportation Commission actually awarded the project late last year. And it was going to benefit, I mean, yes, it was going to go around Woodway Elementary, which is where my kids went to school, you know, a long time ago. But it's for a walking area, right? You know, it's for, it's for eight foot wide sidewalk along that stretch. And sadly sidewalks are not, not cheap when you've got all the engineering. And it's more than just a sidewalk. I mean, it's, it's curbing, it's ADA compliant, it's crosswalks. It's, it's something that would benefit a lot of folks. It would give people a chance to walk, you know, not on the grass and not dodging around, you know, little holes in the ground or something to get to Walgreens, for example. So and I know there's concern about spending money on it, you know, $262,000 that the city would have to kick in. But it's like, but that's a small part of a $1.05 million project, you know, that 80% of it would be paid for from federal funds. You know, Texas, that's the administrator of it. They made this. And it was, it was one of several. I mean, there were statewide, there were 83 projects awarded. And eight within the Waco District. Mart has one. And Salado also has one. So it's, it just made sense for me in a lot of ways. And I know it, it became a big issue and I thought there was a lot of misinformation going on about trying to get Midway to pay for it. Well, Midway didn't bring it up. This is, this is a benefit to the entire city. I know not everybody uses it, but I think enough people do.
That was the counter argument? What was, what did you say the counter argument was?
The counter argument was that because it was going to be alongside this Woodway Elementary, that would, that Midway ISD should pay for it, you know? Because they have a bigger budget. And yes, they do, but you know, Midway is struggling too because of all some of these mandates. You know, they're having to start up a police department, you know, that that is part of some of the stuff that's happened ever since the Uvalde shooting, you know, trying to make it safer. And honestly, this is kind of, I mean, it's, it's a walking safety issue or biking along that area. But I think it's still a safety issue and it benefits, but it's more than just the school. It benefits anybody that wants to be in that area. You know, and another thing is too, I mean, Woodway Elementary has been a great partner. The Woodway Public Safety Department barbecue is held there every year. That's a big fundraiser for, for Woodway's Public Safety Department. And they've done that for, for free. And I mean, wouldn't it be great to not have to, because there's a lot of people that have to park in that area. Wouldn't it be nice to park and then be able to walk on a eight foot wide sidewalk to get where you needed to around the school? So I mean, that's just one example, so.
So those were the two, the two things that kind of got you saying, hey, I want to get involved. The, you said HOA?
Well, like I said, I had already decided before that. I would say the other thing is, I, I mean, I did file against an incumbent. And I just felt like in some ways, I didn't think, I didn't think he was as engaged as maybe he, he might have been when he started on council. That was another reason to get involved. I just felt like I could bring maybe a little more. Honestly, going back to my journalism skills, I mean, I feel like I'm a pretty good listener. And part of what I would have to do as a journalist is take that information and then share it with the readers. You know, hopefully writing it so that they could understand things well. And I think I can bring that, you know, to the role of city council as well. Looking at, well, another great example, as a journalist, if I had an interview, I would try to research information on that person, you know, or or business that I was interviewing, you know, so I could come in with good questions.
Sure.
I think I can bring the same thing to council.
I apologize that I'm not, you, you have 30 years, 20 years experience in this and I have no experience in this.
38 actually, but yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, yeah, I don't necessarily have the best questions, but I do want to, I want to give people the opportunity to share what they want to share.
And frankly, one of the things that I try to do whenever I do an interview is I try to end by saying, is there something that you want to say that I haven't asked?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we, we can come in with blinders and there's certain things we, we focus on and and don't get the full picture. So I always like to ask that question too. Is there something that you feel is important that we haven't talked about? And sometimes you get some really insightful information that can completely change the the tenor of the article sometimes.
Wow.
So, yeah, so I like to think I do that. And, you know, I used to, so I, I covered, you know, whether it was school boards or city council meetings, like county government as well. So I mean, I am used to looking at, at budgets and and seeing where the money's being spent and hopefully asking the right questions. One of the big things that I used to try to do was what I would call pocketbook journalism. I mean, how does it affect people in the pocketbook? I mean, that's, so many times that's the real question, you know, and that's something that you want to be careful too when you're doing with with taxes. I mean, you know, Woodway's got the third lowest tax rate in the county. And, you know, no one likes to pay, I don't, I don't like to write that check either when it comes to, comes to tax time. But I think Woodway, for the most part, does a really good job of watching, you know, the tax base, trying to figure out how to best spend for projects, just being a wise steward. And I mean, you've got to do that, you know, and you do that in consultation with your city staff. I mean, they're there, they're, they're professionals, they're meant to, you know, look into that. And then a lot of times they give recommendations. That's not to say you should never, you should ask questions. But I think a lot of times, you know, take, take what they bring to those council meetings and get that a lot of thought. Cause they've done the hard research on that and and they're bringing their best recommendation. It may not be the right one. Certainly council has the right to to vote it down and sometimes should, depending on the situation. But yeah, I just feel like I can bring a, a good measured and reasonable examination of those issues. And then vote accordingly with community input. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, anybody think that I do it in a vacuum. Because sometimes until you've got somebody coming from the public at the, at those public sessions, you may not have the full picture, you know, and and I don't think you should ever do something without having the entire view of that issue.
I have so many questions, but I don't want to like, I don't want to like, I told you real clearly, I'm not going to do any gotcha questions. But I, I'm so new to this whole world. Like I didn't think a thing about.
Right.
Interviewing people and I never darkened the doors of city, city hall unless I was voting or I needed to be there to keep my business going.
Yeah. Well, I think that's true for most of us. I mean, but I really didn't do a whole lot of going to those meetings either. Well, I couldn't, well, because, let's see. Yeah, I never did cover a, a meeting. I had been, so my son actually, when he was in high school, he was on the Woodway Youth Commission. So I attended a couple of meetings to watch him that, like where they got recognized, that type of thing. So yeah, been really involved. My, both my kids played at the, the Woodway Family Center. My son more so, he did, they both played T-ball back in the day. He played coach pitch. And then I was an assistant coach for his basketball team. Thankfully, a, a much better coach who, who had played college ball was in charge. I was just holding the clipboard and, you know, making sure the, the kids had enough, you know, they got on and and played, you know, enough time in that. So yeah, but that was great.
My five year old just started, where am I, orienting? Just started playing T-ball over there.
Yeah. Yeah, Tuesday night, we had a little meet and greet in the neighborhood and driving back, yeah, they were, they were all out and busy on the field.
Well, one of the other questions that came up with some of the other candidates was what's the interaction between city? You touched on it and I'd like to hear your perspective. City, city management and paid city officials and council. What, what would you like that relationship to look like?
Well, I certainly don't think it needs to be adversarial, but I mean, I think you do need to, to hold city staff accountable to giving you the best information. I mean, city council does set the agenda. I mean, they, they do look at, at areas that they want to do things. And certainly, you know, looking ahead, infrastructure is going to be a big thing. I mean, we've got aging water pipes that have to be replaced and there is a plan in place already that I will say that, who also running Story Cook, who is an incumbent, has been involved in and she's familiar with. And can honestly speak to it a lot better than I could on that end. But I mean, you're looking at that, you've got to be able to keep, keep the city functioning. I mean, you need a, you need a great public safety department. Ideally, you, you need spaces like this so that people can, can enjoy it. I mean, I think we've got a great, great park system through here. You know, we've got the, the brand new Woodway Family Center up there that is a, is a terrific facility. You know, it's a shame that, you know, thanks to, thanks to COVID and and just the way costs skyrocketed, they had to scale down their initial plans for that, but it's a, it's a great facility.
The new one, you mean?
The new one, yeah, yeah. You know, there's a question now what to do with, with the old one. And there is a, there's a consulting firm looking into that right now. So I, I'm hesitant to really say much on that until we, until the council, which of course I may or may not be on by the time it comes up for discussion, is looking at to see what's the cost, you know, and and can it serve? And I think, you know, we also got to see, you know, the, the Woodway Family Center is still new. So we have to see just, they're still trying to figure out how the programming can work for everybody. Yeah, exactly. You know, how much use is it getting? What things can we offer? They've got, I think, a great plan. They've, you know, they've got some art classes, you know, lined up that I think will be a terrific thing. They're really kind of going beyond just the, the idea of being a place for, you know, people to, you know, play pickleball or shoot a, shoot a basketball.
When, when are the basket? I haven't seen any of the schedules. My son's at basketball age. Do you know when that is, when the kids can come play basketball?
I know they had a clinic.
Okay.
Two or three weeks ago. I don't know if that was a precursor to.
I need to go in there and just find out more. So I'd like to know if there's like open gym or something. We don't have a basketball hoop.
There's not currently, you know, they do have a lot of time designated right now for senior programming from eight to three. Of course, most kids are going to be in school unless they're homeschooled right now. So they're trying to figure it out. I think summer is going to be interesting too, because you're going to have kids out. So they're going to have to try to figure out the best way to utilize that. But there's, there's a good staff in place there and I think they'll, they'll get a feel for things and and kind of make adjustments as needed. Yeah.
Well, what else?
I've been talking with and having meet and greets with Story Cook. She's actually a friend from church and has been on council for, she was appointed initially and then she's ending her first term. So this is her first, she was unopposed last time. So this is her first campaign as well. So we're kind of navigating some of that together with campaign finance reports, which are always loads of fun to, to do. But also very important because it keeps things transparent, you know, you know, who's supporting who. But you know, it's not cheap. I mean, that first set of 300 campaign signs was a $3,400.
No way.
Cost. So I have been thankful for, for the support, you know, friends and such that have given me a little bit to help in that regard. Cause yeah, I'm, I'm having to dig in a little bit on the personal end. But yeah, that, that was an eye opener when I got that first, first. I mean, I did know what it was supposed to be, but when you still get that invoice and you see that, that number that's, you know, four digits, you know, to the left of the, the decimal point is.
Nobody likes writing that kind of check.
No, no.
Wow.
It's like that tax check in, in, in the end of the year, January. Yeah. It's a big chunk.
Wow.
Yeah. But honestly, I just feel like, and so I'm 60, I'm no, I'm no spring chicken. But, you know, the other two individuals are retired, which gives them a chance to, you know, probably serve. But I feel like I'm in a lot of ways maybe more connected with the community, you know, and what's, what's happening in that regard through the nonprofit. I'm active with, with all three chambers, you know, whether it's the, the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce, the African American Chamber, the Centex African American Chamber of Commerce, and the Centex Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So we're involved with them. I'm also in the Rotary Club of Waco, been a member of that since 2016. I am one of the selection committee members for the Texas Sports Hall of Fame, which goes back to my, my love of sports. And back when I did that in my early years in journalism. So that's been a great thing. Active in our church as well.
What church you guys at?
Calvary Baptist Church.
Okay, I'm trying to think where it's. That's on 18th and?
Yes, 18th and Boski, 18th and Holman, depending on what side, yeah. It, it's always tricky because you've got Calvary Chapel, which is also on 18th, a little farther, closer to.
No, no, I know.
Yeah, closer to what's, and there's some confusion sometimes. I remember I was there one, it was a Thursday morning. I think we, there was Meals, Meals on Wheels going on that day and I forget what I was there for. Oh, I think we had kids going off to camp. And I was, I was there and part, Sheriff Meckinmore comes in, he said he was looking for this first responders banquet or breakfast that was happening that morning. I said, we've got Meals on Wheels out of here, but that's, I, and it turns out he, he called somebody and it was Calvary Chapel.
Is that right?
That was hosting that. So, so, but yeah, we've actually, we joined there, we've been there 25 years as well at church. So it's, it's, it's been a terrific church and we just love being involved with that. Yeah, they recently started helping with the food distribution, which has been really terrific. And I think helped for, for meeting that need in the community.
It's a dynamic, we, I used to live there in college, we, when it was a kind of a rough area over there. It's not, not as much now, but we had a D-house right on 17th and Morrow. It burned down.
Oh, okay.
It didn't burn down when we were there, but I, you know, we were overseas for 15 years, came back and there's no house. But, but yeah, that's got Greater New Light across the street, awesome church. We work with you. Antioch is down the road, which is where I go.
Yeah.
And like, it's just a dynamic, and Jimmy Doral.
Oh, Jimmy's terrific.
He's terrific. I, I worked for them when we, when I was in college and man, just a great community down there.
Yeah, we actually do a, every spring for Palm Sunday, we do a joint worship in the park, Seeley Park, that's right across with Greater New Light.
That's right.
Which is, which is, yeah, just wonderful. And then we have, then we have burgers and and hot dogs afterwards. And it's a, it's a great time to fellowship.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yeah. What else you got?
Anything else?
Gosh, I'm trying to think, you know, I hit, hit a lot of, a lot of areas. But yeah, I guess, I mean, we're talking about it because I'm running for city council and I just kind of want folks to know why I'm passionate about it. I mean, I do love Woodway, certainly have been. And, and again, I could never serve until now because of my work at, at the Waco Trib. But now that I do have a new job and, and I'm allowed to and I have, and I can find the time to do it because it is important. I mean, I think, you know, the future of the city is very, we've got a, we've got an aging population a lot of ways. I know there's some concern about development and I think we always have to be cautious there. But I think we need to find ways to expand our tax base. I mean, there's not a whole lot of area that we can add business. But I think where we can, we need to look. I mean, there's not a whole lot of area that we can add business, but I think where we can, we need to look at that, we need to bring in sales tax, because I mean, I'm sixty, so I'm going to be hitting that homestead exemption on my property at some point, so from that tax, it's going to be capped, and we're going to have, you know, costs are going to keep going up when it comes to replacing you know, pipes and the like, so we've got to make sure that we've got that money so we can take care of things. You know, I think right now the city does a really good job with their fund balance of doing that, you know, trying to avoid bond elections to pay for things, I mean, some, you know, we did have an issue last year with, I think, three three of the wells were down at various points during the summer, which is not a great time with the drought. So.
What's a bond election?
A bond election is when you basically are looking to borrow money so you can fund a big project, and those have to go before the voters.
Okay, and then then you pay it back with tax revenue in the coming years, okay.
Exactly. Yeah. So, you know, you you want to do that as little as as possible, but sometimes you just have to, depending on the, especially if you've got a, you know, huge breakage that you just have to repair and can't do it any other way. You know, but yeah, so I like to think that, you know, a vote for myself and for for my friend Story is is a vote for looking ahead to the future of Woodway, trying to to make those smart decisions, informed decisions that best serve as many folks as possible for Woodway, you know, part of her her mantra with her campaign has been for Woodway, and I'm fully, fully behind that, it, you know, it's for everyone, not for particular special interest, you know, which becomes a popular saying sometimes among among the others, you know, seeking seeking a spot on council as well, but yeah, we're really wanting to serve and serve well and serve wisely, I think is the, is what we're looking to do.
That seems like a good place to stop.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I so appreciate it.
I really appreciate your time as well.